Special meeting of the Imperial Public Library Board.
Roll call. Trustee of the Marana. Trustee Blackwood.
President.
And President Brown.
Present. Let's rise for the croyed allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments for the agenda?
There are no adjustments.
You have any public appearances?
Uh, Mr. President, I do believe one of your applicants is in the audience, but they would reserve time to speak at that time the agenda items discussed.
And let's move on to the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We're voting. Question carries three zero.
Okay, we'll move on to section D, which is a work session of the Library Board of Trustees for discussion only.
Mr. President, um trustees, um, we have a few items that um our president had um brought up that we we would like to um go over. Uh, some of the notes are identified, I um, let me see, identified items to be discussed during the work session, which includes library community events, publicity and social media presence, starting a Friends uh Library Group and the Library Port Board of Trustees' mission and purpose. Uh, you do have in front of you, um, when you discuss the Library Board of Trustees' um mission and purpose, you do have a copy of your um. Give me the word Katie, the.
I lost by less, thank you.
Clear way. Off the discussion.
Being a work session, I think that we can go ahead and um if you'd like to just start with the first one um identified, which is um, the community events, if there's anything that um. The Board of Trustees. I oh, it's on, it's on the um director's notes.
On the reported.
Uh huh, on E um E on trustee notes.
I don't recall bringing up anything about uh the community events, although I did have things to um add about the other.
Okay, perfect.
Topics.
Okay. So I think for the the purposes of the work session this evening, as we kind of go through, it's, we have the bylaws in front of you as as to what the parameters currently are. And then based off of kind of uh your your inquiry, Mr. President, then we can kind of see um how we can build that framework out to encompass some of the items that you brought forward. Um, we can have a robust discussion about where those things fit in. I think you'll find that some of the topics that you had mentioned um do fall into other areas such as Planning Commission or City Council, but at the same time, we get to kind of define what the Library Board gets to be a part of moving forward. And so we're excited about that and we wanna, we wanna have that discussion and tailor that. Um, how that fits into the bylaws moving forward, there would be potentially an amendment, we'd bring it back and and we can look at that. Um, so I think it's kind of your your turn, ask us questions, we'll fill in the blank where we can and and provide some guidance there. And this is great, you've got a couple of candidates um in the audience as well, so that it'll, it'll be great information for them as as well.
Um, I think part of my reason for bringing that up in terms of what the Library Board does was seeing some of the early meetings and really the the lack of action items and and really the lack of um things for us to really be engaged in and involved in that um were specific to what the happenings of the library. Um, I did notice that I was seeing some other cities kind of folding in different functions into a library board, almost like a community services board. Um, saw that the city of El Centro did something along those lines. And, you know, I I must admit, I'm, I, you know, I'm ignorant on what exactly how some of those other functions are folded into some of the other boards like Planning Commission or what is just, you know, basically the, under the purview of the City Council itself. But part of the idea was that it seemed like um, you know, sometimes some of the things that a community services board would do um could kind of, you know, spell the city council a little bit, you know, when it comes to, you know, more weighty issues that they have to take, you know, under their belt. And so that was, that was kind of the idea of opening that discussion and and seeing what a library, a library board could do, you know, other than what it's doing now, which is still, you know, a great function.
And I think just historically speaking, it it is because of the the limited capacity that we we previously had, the the City Council sitting as a library board. And and so we too as staff and and Amber will tell you, she wants to develop into, you know, more of a kind of a comprehensive board that has your teeth in a lot more things, but community services is much more than just library. So some of the things that you're talking about, all the recreation programs Amber and her staff put together, things like that. So so if we're gonna develop that, obviously, we would need to adjust bylaws and things to to fully encompass those. Um, so if there's something specific um that you had brought up, or maybe it's come to your mind since then, that we can kind of outline and and figure out where those pieces are, we can, we can do that here today.
Like, like, I'd kind of like to gauge some interest from the fellow board members over over adding additional responsibilities. Um, community services, community services often entails parks and rec, often entails park, oh, parks, recreation departments. I mean, would that be biting off more than we can chew by bringing in library and and recreation and and parks and some of those things? And and when I say spell the city council, I mean, cities grow, the city is growing at such a, at such a rapid rate that I imagine it's only gonna get busier for the five people that are sitting up there. And, you know, this was all part of an idea of how this could possibly help the city council.
Yeah, perhaps eh providing some examples of what other cities do for.
I think like just kind of eh brainstorming possibilities.
I mean, I understood El Centro, the county, the county seat, they're the biggest, it's the biggest city and they have a lot, a lot of work, a lot of things on their plate. Um, but they, they do have a community services board and they they deal with parks and rec and and library as one, as one entity. As far as I'm, as far as I know, yes.
So as the divisions of community services here for the city of Imperial, they encompass three different divisions for recreation, special events, and library services. And within all three of those frameworks are a very extensive list of events and um programs, obviously, that serve not just the city of Imperial population, but a regional population. We have, we have a lot of families that come and attend other programs. So if there's, if there's areas in particular that um you, from the city standpoint, I will say our parks is actually grown into its own department division. So, you know, that would, that would need to involve conversations with the Parks Director. Um, but it, you know, the recreational side of things and the programs in that regard, that that all is housed with, within Amber and her staff. So um for special events, for example, we've got Imperial Market Days events um for, you know, we've, and then there's some summer events. Uh, we have many, you know, movies in the park or movies at the pool, as you see right now in the summertime, trying to cool off. Um, and then recreation programs, a lot of camps. Um, but there's also all of these beautiful learning aspects incorporated with the camps that Amber and her staff have done an amazing job at do, at putting together. And then all of that ties into different areas within the library as well. So um some of those, if, so if we're looking to broaden the scope uh for library services to community services board, I would say that, you know, we can start with those three divisions and kind of figure out if there's anything in particular that that you want to be more involved in or or anything that I've said thus far that you're, that, you know, how can we be a part of that? And then we can define that, um, because we we definitely want you to to be engaged and and have that role within within the library and community services and and in the community.
How would, how would staff, you know, what would be devil's advocate on a situation like that, on on seeing something like that happen?
To be honest, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm just trying to think of what other action items would be added um with the adding of the um special events and recreation. It's pretty much the same as the library. Um, so I'd, I'd really have to sit down and and probably meet with the city of El Centro and look at their, their, um, the dynamics of how they run um the Board of Trustees and.
There's something that you can bring back to us that would be kind of a, maybe a, this is how it would look under Plan A.
Yes.
Form B, Form C.
I sure can, yes.
And uh would that, would that also involve a a conversation with the Parks Director over possibility of that? I mean, cause would, would seem like that, would that possibly be helpful to the Parks Department to have, to have that, or is that just one additional layer they don't wanna mess with?
Um, well, yeah, parks deals with council, no, I would say if if parks, parks is specific to um city facilities and not so much the recreation side. So so you have much more of the logistical support of the recreation programs housed within park and the maintenance of those facilities. So it's not, it's the supporting amenity, if you will, to the programs and if you look at it from from that lens. Um, but I I will speak with the Parks Director and and see if he's interested as far as bringing in, if there's ways that we can collaborate. We have Friends of Imperial Parks as well that's housed in our Parks Department. Um, it's, it's its own nonprofit entity, but it's, it's ran by city staff, so that might be a way of of bringing that around as well and and collaborating from that.
Definitely a worthwhile conversation to have.
Absolutely.
Mr. Brown, if I may, I think what you're seeing in El Centro is kind of the pendulum swinging back. I think jurisdictions as they grow, want in in wanting community development, one way to do that would be to create various sorts of boards. And I think what happened over time in El Centro, and you see it also in Colexico, where you had scores of um boards, and then it became difficult to find people to serve on those boards.
Colexico still has right now.
And and uh, so I think what you see is kind of a consolidation. So I I I think your point, though, is well taken and maybe um, I mean, I'll just say it, I I think you, we don't wanna have a situation where you're giving up your valuable time to come here and then you walk out thinking that was a complete waste of time, right? And so I think part of the, part of our job is going to be to set up a structure because you're not gonna go away, this body is not gonna go away, you're mandated by state law to exist. And so uh uh thi- this board is gonna be around, and so if you're gonna be around, let's make it worth your while.
You don't wanna sound like I was being disrespectful, but I I'm saying what you're saying without saying it.
That's right.
No, I I, that message, I I certainly got the message and and because, and fr- and frankly, over the years with prior boards, I I'm, I got some of that feedback from board members who left. Uh, and and so it's, I um, I I would, I think I was a little bit more sensitive to that issue. But, you know, but certainly um, y- you're giving up your time and we appreciate, certainly appreciate that. And so uh we wanna u- utilize uh your talents. And I I think if we do it in the right way, so may, and while staff is doing what Amber and Alexis just alluded to, uh, one thing I would ask you to do, you have the bylaws in front of you and and you'll, if you look at Article Two, the mission and purpose, if you look at those bullet points, maybe that will help kind of formal uh generate something in your mind in terms of something that you would like to see this board doing. And by the same token, if you think there needs to be some of these bullet points removed or some bullet points added, uh, that that would uh a better uh define your your uh vision for what this board ought to be doing. Uh, I mean, you know, you, you created the bylaws and the bylaws can, or can be amended and so.
Sure not, I I mean, I'm sure so others would agree that, you know, from, at least for myself, being on a library board and this may be the first board for a lot of people. And so it's, it's, you know, we're still, we still don't know what we are and what we wanna be and what we wanna do moving forward. So the, I mean, this is, it, what I would have thought this was, the first week I was here, the second week I was here is much different than than what I think it is now. And so it's, it's nice to be able to kind of have these conversations and to be reminded of Article Two, to be reminded of this.
It's not to say the 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 notions that you came in with shouldn't be, should be put aside. I mean, it it, um, I suspect that what whatever you thought might indeed be able to be folded in. And so let's have that discussion.
Sometimes I misspeak and I don't wanna, I don't want any of this to sound insulting or anything like that. I'm just kind of trying to, trying to articulate myself and trying to figure out, uh, I'm actually trying, really trying to figure out what I mean as I say it, to be honest with you.
I heard Alexis say many times during COVID that we're flying the plane as we build it.
Yeah, it was, it was absolutely terrifying, it was, but we made it, we landed, okay.
Did we?
Yeah.
There, there was just one, you had asked about devil's advocate, I'll just say from a legal standpoint, one of the most important things from a lawyer's standpoint is to make sure if the city needs something quickly, if there's a grant that's about to expire, if there's something that has to get done, if you've got four boards or a longer process. So when we write these, I'm thinking in the back of my mind, make sure that if the council needs to act, it's there, they can do it, right? So advisory, but being involved, but making sure that we don't have hurdles to uh being able to get immediate things done that need to be done, so. Just a, a, you know, when it gets written.
So I, the way I would look at it if I were you is that you you essentially have a blank sheet of paper to draw on. And given that, you shouldn't be hearing from us in response to anything you say that, well, gee, we've always done things this way or that way. We're gonna, we can basically create from the ground up.
Brand new here, yeah, we're, we're excited.
I'll just start by saying I brought up the social media thing the the last time we all got together. And I'm, I wanna say that, you know, almost immediately overnight after, after we talked, um, your social media presence went through the roof, I mean, it's, it's great, I mean, it's really, it's, it's beautiful.
We have a few dinosaurs that we're gonna be bringing out too.
No, it's really, really, it's really nice, it's really nice to see. And I I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't change any of that.
That's awesome, thank you. We're actually gonna try to convince our city manager and assistant city manager to let us open a TikTok account.
No, I I think it's great, cause I I was concerned about that, just like people knowing like the stuff that's going on here. Like, I think just a lot of people don't know, but like I found the Facebook and the and Instagram and it's just like blowing up and like the quality of the content and like showing what's going on, like it looks amazing, so I just wanna say like, it's, it's awesome, yeah.
Well, we, we recently attended the CLA uh conference and one of the classes we attended, um, you've met um Victoria here, you know, for the teen program. Victoria and I attended a TikTok o'clock um program that was put on by Woodland Library. And um they're very inspirational and fun, so um it was so funny because right there I was sitting, sorry, I talk too much. I was sitting with my cellphone and I got a text from the city attorney and we were leaving and I said, I got the tech, uh, email from the city attorney and she looked at me and she's like, can we get a cat, a library cat? Cause they had a library cat, so anyways, um. It was funnier when you were there, I guess. Um, but yeah, hopefully. So we're having fun. Um, so would you like to move on to to look at um some other items that was brought up um with the Friends of the Library Group?
Yeah, um, I had actually, um, I haven't talked to all of them, but I did talk to Colexicos to kind of find out how it supports the library and and what they do. And um I will admit that I, I didn't get as many answers as I would have liked, I don't think it's as robust as I thought it would have been. Um, mostly it tended to be a conversation about book sales and, you know, s- selling the old books in the library and and donating that money back, but, but, I mean, that money did, does go directly to funding their summer reading programs and doing things like that. So um, I'm sure that's not the only thing a Friends of the Library can do. Um, what exactly does the Friends of the Parks do? Um, um, so what are some of the different things that it does for the, for the Parks Department?
So the Friends of Imperial Parks was just created this, this last fiscal year, and so it's still getting its feet under it. It was actually created as a separate entity, um, so it's, it's not with through the city necessarily. There's um obviously staff, we do um put in our own time to to make that uh nonprofit move. But essentially, it it does come down to a way to collaborate with the city ultimately on capital projects. We have several parks, for example, that are general funded, um, that don't have the CFDs or landscaping districts to sustain or improve those areas. And what it comes down to is it's very difficult to um gather resources as a means to work on on those certain projects. So uh we also apply for a lot of grants that do need a nonprofit as a community partner, so it does serve that as well. Um, and so it's able to improve overall the quality of life availability in the various areas throughout the city of Imperial through different means, whether it be um as a means to gather and do graffiti abatement is one of the things. Also with water conservation being so prevalent and, you know, back to the front of the conversation, I should say, cause it's been a way of life since our previous drought. Um, a way to help the community educate themselves on drought tolerant landscaping, what are some things they can do to conserve water? So just trying to get those points back out into the community um and and use it as a, as a partner to the city, but it's still its own entity. Meaning if there is a a project that Friends of Imperial Parks identifies that as a priority, but maybe the city of Imperial does not see it, it's a priority, but not on the same prioritization list, Friends of Imperial Parks can go out and and get that project done. And it, and it just allows for more of a collaborative effort in the community, being a nonprofit, it's a, it's a five oh one C three recognized organization. And so um just recently, uh, they had their first barricade event, uh, which was a go topless event. And I say that meaning it was for Jeeps and um off-road vehicles, but we had quite a group uh of registrants come out and participate. And um we were able to raise some funds so we can then keep moving forward and try to gather that. We participated in the last market days during Color Fest, um, a a great charismatic group um did partner with uh Alfred Distributing and uh Trust Me Vodka and were able to do some great themed spirits um and just tried to to generate some of those revenues and again, so we can get that seed money in there and and facilitate those programs, so.
A chance to.
I I I think that's a definite yes, that we would need a a Friends of the Library. I I feel that somebody serving on the Friends of the Library would get more, I don't wanna say, more action and activity going um to bring, to look at programs that need to be funded or the projects that we're trying to fund uh throughout these years that we're working on in the library. So there's a lot of goals that we have for the library as we're um purchasing, um shelving and such. So um I think that would be very worthy.
What goes into it's. How does it, how does it start?
I believe we would apply for the five, um, five oh one three C, um, and then reach out to the community um to become members of the Friends of the Library. I've already had one person come to me at the library, um, stating that she'd like, you know, to put her name on the list if there was ever um some uh opening come up for the uh library or the Board of Trustees. But I had told her about the Friends of the Library and she was interested in in that as well. And she has a, she's a stay-at-home mother right now, but um her, her work experience is grant writing, so um, yeah.
Where's the pub? Out with the library. Ask that because this first go around, when you found the three of us, it took a long time to fill these positions. Um, it's, it's a great embarrassment, riches now, we have so many people don't wanna be on the board, but that took a while to kind of build up that head of steam. Um, do you think that would be an issue?
I don't believe so, we have seven amazing, well, excuse me, six amazing applicants to serve on the board right now um for the two positions. Um, and I think that would be something great to be able to, for those, um, you know, that weren't selected, not because of their um abilities, but just because, um, you know, didn't have enough space, I think that they would entertain um serving on the Friends group.
And so there's a model out there for the city in terms of Friends of the Parks, but there's two aspects, there's an aspect with the Secretary of State to establish the corporation. And then there's the application process with the taxing authorities to get uh the uh letters saying that you've achieved a nonprofit status. And there's some number of thousands of dollars involved in costs to accomplish that. So that's another aspect we would have to consider uh in moving forward.
Would there be a re, a possibly a discussion interaction item next time that might bring us all that part of it? Uh, you know, what's involved in it? And that way, if we have a full board for next time, you know, it'd be a, you know.
It would be a great action item, yeah.
Okay, great.
For discuss. That's everything that was brought up unless there's any. Discuss, I did add um for the discussion part of the meeting, um, an overview of what is um was proposed for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, I broke it down uh to make it simpler for um viewing, this is not the way it looks through the city. Um, but I broke it down so it's easier to see where the monies are, where the monies are going, uh, and where the monies are coming from.
Before we go into that, can I, I, something popped in my head, I just wanted to ask about real quickly. Um, have you ever had author's events? And um I know that with self-publishing, we have a lot of local authors now. And especially with your teen room, you have a lot of teen authors around here as well. Um, has that something that's ever been thought about?
No, um, we did have right before, right when COVID um hit, we had an author and I don't recall her name at this time, but she was going to come to the um, to the library. And um she was unable to come because of COVID, but it was, it was through a grant uh through the state of California. Um, but yeah, something we definitely. Um but yeah, something we definitely would like to do.
Former coworker of mine, uh Darren, he's uh, he has written, he's written a number of Pirates, he's written a Pirates trilogy. Um another um more kind of a mi- uh more kind of a science fiction trilogy. He's written uh one-off science fiction, and this is all not paid. Uh the these weren't paid to publish. These are act- he's actually got a publishing company that solicited him in his work. And I know he'd be willing to do something like that.
That would be great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Those are the fun parts. Have any questions about the budget that's before you?
Just a quick comment with respect to the revenue side. You see the very top item cannabis CUP. When the uh, when the March and Ash uh uh was going through the planning department land use process to get approved. Uh there was a couple things that that happened. One, the voters approved a separate tax, and so uh they're paying that. Uh and that is, that has had a a significant positive impact to our general fund. We try to budget rev- the revenue side on a conservatively. Uh and and this next fiscal year, the conservative estimate is a half a million dollars uh in the sales uh tax. The other thing that they did, and that's what you see here, is that they basically, as part of their application, they agreed to pay uh a portion of their proceeds for two purposes. Um on o- one being a community, kind of a community benefit, uh which is kind of administered by community services and parks and and the other police. So and so uh uh with respect to that, that's that's where that money comes from.
That ten thousand is three percent of what? Three percent of their gross receipts?
Th- three, it's uh three percent of, okay, I'm not an accountant. Three, three percent of gross uh profits. Now, don't ask me what gross profit is because knowing most businesses, you can make your profit anything, virtually anything you want. Uh but uh in any case, that's the language that's in our document. And uh we've come to an understanding as between March and Ash and the city as to what gross profit means. And so that's where where that money's coming.
I'd expect it to increase like double or triple when they start doing um cultivation out of there?
Potentially, although I understand the cultivation is is gonna be used for their purposes. Um we, there, the the sales tax that was approved by the voters, aside from the uh sales for the retail aspect, there's a per square foot uh uh tax on cultivation. So that will generate uh money. So we don't know what that number is. And and wh- what we also expect, if you look around, other jurisdictions are kind of moving in that direction. I think El Centro has something kind of in the pipeline. So how that will impact uh if 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 there's a big enough market out there that it doesn't impact Imperial kind of remains to be seen.
It just as far as cultivation goes, uh there's a, it's indirectly will will increase um when you, when you go through the harvest and manufacturing, you're you're selling it at a wholesale price. However, that does increase what is available through retail. So that's that's where we'll see that benefit. Mister pre- um President and Trustees, you may recall when we went on the tour in the library, some of the furnishings. Um so the teen room, that was all all the um furnishings was purchased with the monies um that we received through the CUP.
Some of the acronyms, Amber, I I I assume that the, in the under grants, is CSL is the California State Library? Okay.
Um California State Library and the CLLS is also through the California State Library, but that's the California Literacy Library Services. Um so um those are grants that we've already applied for. Um but there, we should be hearing from them um this month or early July. They were waiting for the state um budget to be approved.
The category of donations, is that just cash donations or or gifts? Is that?
Uh this is um a remaining balance that has been in in the um in the budget for quite a while. We keep trying to spend it and then so it's still there, so I I felt like I needed to put it there.
So we don't, as we sit here today, we don't know that, so there's not a continuing. There's not folks who come in and say, hey, here's a check.
Um sometimes they, you know, it it's a dime to make a copy and they'll say, keep the quarter, you know? And there are more grants that are coming up. Um I'll mention that during our um uh Director's Report. The library is very exciting to work together on because there's so many opportunities out there that the California State Library provides for funding. Um so a lot of amazing things that you're gonna be um be be part of.
Do we move on to the action items? Okay, we'll move on. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the action items. And that would be uh Library Board of Trustee applicants.
So Mister President, um Board of Trustees, we have six applicants um that have applied for the two um un- unscheduled vacancies uh for the Library Board of Trustees. They're listed alphabetically as their last name in front of you. Um there is space for you to write notes on as you review the applications. And um so that when you can have a discussion to um choose two candidates to um provide to the City Council for recommendation. We do have two candidates sitting in the audience if they would like to speak. Yes, um one person withdrew.
At seven? I thought I counted nine on a, on a prior list. Maybe I don't know how to count.
Maybe we just had a double print of a name and you thought it was nine, but no, seven, seven, now six.
Invite our two applicants up to speak?
Hi, thank you for your time. I am one of the applicants. My name is Mia Hernandez. Um I am gonna just say that I am really excited about hearing the broadening of the tasks for the board because everything that um that would consist of, I have quite experience in. Um a little bit of background, I was once one of Amber's um recreation leaders a few years ago. Um so I do have a quite a knowledge of um, you know, the ins and outs of different programs. Um what it takes, what improvements that I've probably think would make a difference. Um I wrote in my application that I do have some education experience, um like in my bachelor's degree. Because I was once gonna be a teacher. I've switched over my degree, but that doesn't mean I didn't like take those classes. Um so I'm really excited about that because it makes a difference um seeing things from a different perspective as an educator would because it's just different from a business standpoint to an educator's standpoint. And I feel like that would make a big difference on the library board um in terms of services that could be offered. Um and then special events, I've was the Director of um sponsorship and events at the Regional Chamber of Commerce. I am no longer there, um but I still bring that experience with me. Um so I know how to put on the parade and things like that, so it's super exciting. Um and yeah, I mean, if there's any other questions, if you guys wanna look at my application, um I'm pretty excited for the opportunity to serve and I'm hoping for the best.
Good afternoon. My name is Valentina Estes and I am the local owner of Benchmark Mortgage in Imperial. Um I I am so excited about being in this board. Like I I missed the first opportunity to apply for it. I was very upset about it, but I'm glad that it opened again. Um I actually worked with Mia before at the Chamber of Commerce. I served at the Chamber of Commerce for four years in Imperial. Um I do a lot of events for the community, to get back to the community. The board that you guys are in right now is very important to me because my two daughters um were the beginners of the Thousand Points, many, many, many years on reading. I believe in reading. Um I wanna help parents to understand what they need to do to make those kids to read a book. And since I'm bilingual, I figure I'll help the Spanish speaker parents. I wanna get involved with the schools, with the kids. Um I also know how to run the events that she did, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, cuz I was helping him to do it. Um I also part of Mana. I serve with them and I also part of, I don't know, I have like three different groups that I'm helping. But my goal is just to help the community of Imperial. I moved my business to Imperial because I wanna be part of this. And it would be an honor to be part of the library.
For coming in.
Those things, but out of six are here. Lots are open. Not enough of it.
Uh I like what they had to say about like their past experience, also like their passion about um bringing like education and just um also you know, broadening our scope and um they seem that they really care about and it's like bringing uh like educating parents and things like that.
I I agree they are great candidates, but what about the others? There are m- more than one here that's great on paper too.
I just think it's a little, it sounds a little bit extra when when they're engaged enough to pay attention to the agenda, see when the meeting is and then show up and and speak. I mean, I'm not saying that's that's the be all end all. I just think that's a bit, it it means a little bit.
Yeah, in terms of the interest, it could be, but also we don't know the circumstances and since the application is not to pay, that is um A plus of your presence. I'm thinking about fairness about that.
That's true, that's true. Oh, that's true.
And again, I think they are great, but what about the others, like us?
One thing I'd like to remind everybody, on your microphones, if the red light's not coming on, or are you recording, will that hear you? Anybody just watching will not be able to hear you.
Um just wanna quickly point out on on one of your applicants of the six that is here, um which is Miss Stanford. Uh she does not appear to be a registered voter in the city of Imperial and therefore would be disqualified to serve on the board. So I just, if that helps narrow your your window as to anyone that you would choose, so we just took it from from six to five.
Is there anybody in particular that um that that's not present that you think deserves a?
You are, I think, there. Seems to have a little bit of experience. Perhaps uh, at least Martinez?
Yeah. Be close for that. Oh, oh, sorry. There, there you go. It'll automatically pick up.
So but what is the, what is the protocol for?
Uh so in review of your applications, um we we would request that if there's, there's two that you can agree upon that the majority would would take a vote and support or recommend these two individuals for the City Council's consideration on the July sixth agenda, will, we will place um the individuals for their consideration since it is appointed by, but we would say with the recommendation of these two specific individuals from the library board. So it's it's an endorsement for two of the candidates of the five that are eligible to s- to serve.
I really don't wanna discount what you've had to say, but I would, I'm gonna make a motion that uh Valentina, Valentina Estes and Mia Hernandez uh be the two appointees sent to the City Council.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Or time or does it just die for lack of a second? Uh you can take as much time as you need. I don't wanna rush. Yeah. Okay. But there's only two. I I don't know, Dennis and Alexis, she's got um three she's interested in. Obviously, you can only recommend two. But I wonder if they wanted to give a backup if one of those two doesn't work, is it? Is it is ultimately your your recommendation, so so we can absolutely, and we can let the council know that it's in, you know, in this order but out of these three that those would be recommended.
Do you want me to withdraw the motion and you make a motion? I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
All right, so you're gonna draw your motion and do we have a new motion proposed?
I would like to motion to recommend.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, you may begin voting. Motion carries three zero.
I want just to uh clarify, I think it's a great motion and eh the, the way, the the reason I am saying this again is I think they are great candidates. I would be very happy working with the ones that were here, but since the official criteria didn't stay there, that they have to be there or that would be an A plus. I cannot endorse the project. I'm doing those little remarks.
I need to make a correction on that last one. The motion does carry two to one upset.
Okay, sorry.
Does this motion carry without having, without having three?
Since it's a quorum of the majority. Yes. Next meeting will be very.
Okay, we'll move on to reports. Staff report.
Mister President, um trustees, I'll keep it short and sweet, hopefully. Um I had, did email you the Director's Report, so I'll just kinda go through it quickly. We did start our lunch at the library program. And we have built up, we've been having about thirty families a day. Today it was packed, so I'm not sure how many families was in there, but it was amazing. Um they were having a great time. And so we have been running that program Monday through Thursday. And that goes until July thirteenth. That's through the partnership with the Imperial Unified School District, who provides the mills. Um we are providing a pop-up library at Teal Wagner uh school. And so each Friday, a different um grade um of a different set of grades comes to our pop-up library, and we're providing them backpacks, books and activities. Um so we're able to, um by the end of the summer, of, of their summer school, we'll be able to provide every single child um at the summer school, a backpack with books and activities. So that's been a um great program. And then um our twenty-twenty-two summer reading program, there's constantly something going on in our library. We have um, I think, five different reading programs for the zero through five um children on Fridays. And uh then we have, I believe, this is written wrong. It's mon- um it's not Mondays and Wednesdays. Those are four different times that they're come, um that classes are being offered. So we have four different days um that classes are being offered for the summer reading program for children ages five to twelve. On Wednesdays, our teens meet um at the library, and then our adults meet on Thursdays at the library as well, also. Um so we're serving all ages for the summer reading program. Um our teen makers learn, play, create and cultivate. We have um our first set of four interns that have already started. Uh so uh they're working on their planning and designing the programs that they'll be implementing this summer. Um so I've been posting a little bit about them on, on, online as well. Um but a great set of kids, so um. And then our sprout growing together. Uh we've, we're still working with ICOE to offer those storytimes for the children. Those are very popular. And then we're working with the Farm Smart Program um to design and plan the garden uh which we'll be working on after the sun kind of gets a little further away from us this summer. Uh and then um in our report, we were able to purchase a story walk with some remaining funds that we had from our sprout program uh that ended in um in March. And so those have arrived, uh those have been turned, turned over to the Parks Department. They'll be installing those um at Eager Park, leading to the library. So we'll have a couple of um story features at the library. And we'll switch it up where the story starts at the library, and then they, they, they walk through the park to finish the story. And then we'll also um switch it up where it starts at the park and then it can end at the library. So um that's gonna be something very fun and unique for the Imperial Valley. Um and then, um yeah, so all of our programs are continuing that we always offer. We do have our Zip Books Program um that people can order their books. Up to ten books can be shipped to them um each month. Um and then I had mentioned that uh the State Library has opened a couple of applications um for new um funding. Today, they opened up the Copycat Cat Grant Project, and that is due July twenty-eighth to apply. And we can apply for up to two um copycat projects. And what this is are successful projects other libraries have had, and so they provide you the basic information for the projects and then you copycat it. So um there are two programs on there that serve adults. And um I'm kinda leaning towards that, since we, it's hard to find grants to serve adults. Um usually it's for children, teens, um so I think that would be worth our time to apply for those monies uh to serve adults. And then the Zip Books um Funding Application, they've released that, and that is due July twenty-first. And so we'll be applying for that as well.
Do either trustee have anything to report?
No.
No.
Okay, unless there are any questions, um I'll move to adjourn the meeting.